Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this Tuesday, May twenty eighth for our business meeting of the Board of School Directors. We're going to begin by calling this meeting to order and we'll begin by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman, if we are ready, could we please do roll call?
Yes, Ms. Kauf.
Present.
Mr. Wright is absent. Ms. Richardson.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Hopkins.
Um, she wanted to present yesterday.
Uh, Mr. Tom.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Callahan not present. Uh, Ms. Kowk Henry.
Present.
Ms. Ivory.
Present.
And Ms. Boykins will be joining us shortly. Uh, Mr. Bangora not present. Ms. Wise is online. Uh, Ms. Askew Green not present. Uh, Ms. Faber. And that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. We're gonna hold our comments and announcements by the Board President when she returns, as well as the superintendent's report. They will present once they return from their event at the high school. So we're gonna go move on to our approval of the motion to approve the agenda for May twenty eighth.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. Can I have an approval for the approval of minutes for the business meeting?
April. We need to call the vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes? The next we'll have approval of minutes for our business meeting for April twenty second.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, motion passes. Uh, we're gonna go to the approval minutes for the committee meeting of the whole, May twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion passes. Thank you. We'll next move on to our remarks by our student representatives. We have Mr. Bangora. Is he present this evening? I was not sure if I heard.
He is not, Ms. Ivory.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wise, you are online. Good evening. You have the floor if you are available. Ms. Wise?
I think she's on the side.
Oh, she may be.
I think she's.
We can come back.
We'll come, yep, I'll come back and see if she's available and Ms. Askew is unavailable. Eli Faber? You have the floor if you would like. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, so there was, in the beginning of this month, there was sort of like a situation that the students were initially upset about the dress code. When the weather started getting warmer and they started wearing more shorts and like, it more like, I don't know how else to word it, but like, um, the majority of the complaints were about how the dress code sexualizes us and how it targets curvier girls. I got many complaints, so I reached out to Mr. Curry immediately and we had like a meeting the day after I sent the email. I met with Mr. Curry, Mr. Curry from here at Congress, um, and Ms. Jefferson, along with another peer. We discussed the issue and I presented the idea of having.
Can everyone turn off their volume in here? Thank you.
I presented the idea of having an assembly so that the students could better understand what was happening and why all of a sudden it felt like students were getting dress coded like more frequently or more often than in the winter. Since then, I have heard less complaints, but a few of my peers would still like have a discussion about updating some of the items of the dress code. So that's, that's the biggest one.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you. I'm glad. Thank you for stepping up and speaking up for the students. So I hopefully please update us and let us know how the assembly went and if there's anything else we can do.
It happened the same week, I think, or like shortly the week after.
Okay.
So I, I think it went well, but a stu- a few of the students were still like, I still got students, you know, was frustrated with the the dress code as a whole and how it's like, it feels like it's targeting certain people.
So, Ms. Faber, um, do you wanna talk to the Chair of Policy, Ms. Hopkins?
Yeah.
And do you wanna?
To set up a meeting.
Yeah.
And like I could ask around, see what students want to be invited to that.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
So thank you. No, yes. So yes, make sure we follow up with, with that so we can make sure all the students' voices are being heard with that and, you know, as long, to make sure it aligns with what our policy does read to see what we can do to support. Thank you. And we have Ms. Wise is present. She said her voice, her sound is acting up, but she is present with us. So if her, if her sound does start to work, we will let her come in at another time.
She, she could also put her update in the chat if she weren't correct.
She can. I wanna give her a moment. She said she's trying to work on her sound. So if it, if it does not come back in, we'll, we'll add it in. We'll put her behind Dr. B. Coats once he does his update as well, so we can continue moving on with the agenda. Okay, so next we're gonna go into our special awards. Okay. We have recognition of Mohammed Bangora, twenty-four Student Board Representative. And this special award is for Mohammed Bangora, a senior at Pinewood High School, is finishing his fourth year as a Student Board Representative. The school board would like to take a moment to recognize him and thank him for his service and commitment to the William Penn School District and community. So congratulations, Mr. Bangora. I know he is not with us this evening, but I do wanna highlight and thank him for being here for the years during my time on the board.
Do you think you have time to celebrate, uh, Mr. Bangora, since I'm sure he's over at the other.
Right, he's at the awards. Absolutely. I think we, um, at the next board meeting, and I'm sure through our social media, they will highlight Mr. Bangora as well, so we could just make sure that we highlight him at our next board meeting, as well as make sure through our social media outlet as well, to make sure we celebrate Mr. Bangora and his four years with us.
Ms. Ivory, Dr. B. Coats is now in the room.
Hi, Dr. B. Coats. Would you like? All right. So would, would you like to do your report now, or would you like us to come back to you, since I know you were running from the event awards assembly?
Right.
Ms. Ivory, I do believe that I am ready. I believe so. Yes, I am ready, I believe.
Okay, well, you have the floor, Dr. B. Coats. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this evening I do have an update that I would like to share with our community. We have several highlights tonight. As always, uh, this is a month where we do highlight various students that have made, um, significant accomplishments. We also have other items that we wanna highlight for success stories, special thank yous, and then district and community announcements. Uh, this is one of the highlights, I believe, of, uh, what we do in our district. We have students at every school that we wanna highlight. Our first student is Nicholas Lawrence, who is a sixth grade student at Alden Elementary. You can see some of the accomplishments here. Um, it's Nicholas. It says he's an old soul. They used to say that to me when I was a student, so I can relate to you a lot, Nicholas. And congratulations for being recognized as a sixth grade student at Alden Elementary School. Next, we have Bryce Burwell, who is a sixth grade student at Ardmore Avenue Elementary. Uh, you can see that he is a leader amongst his classmates, along with lots of other accomplishments. So Bryce, I want to say to you, congratulations as well. Cash Smith is a third grade student at Bell Avenue Elementary. Uh, he's an outstanding student in a variety of ways. And Cash, I wanna say keep up the great work. Uh, we are very, very proud of you, and he's a third grade student at Bell Avenue. Our next student is Ariel Gabaway. She is a fourth grade student at Cowen Elementary School. We want to say thank you for showing up every day, ready to learn. Our next student is Shamir Relay. She's an exceptional, exceptional student. She is a third grade student at East Lansdowne Elementary Student. And it says here that she is admirable and very, very sweethearted. So, uh, we appreciate what you're doing and keep up the great work with your super grades as well as your magnificent behavior. Amaya Cummings is a fifth grade student at Evans Elementary School. She exhibits a great example of citizenship and academics. Great job, Amaya. Park Lane, we have Logan Adams, who was a second grade student. Logan, I'm still trying to work on demonstrating patience, but maybe I'll come and check in with you and learn something. She's a second grade student at Park Lane Elementary. I'm glad to see that. You always are being calm and keeping control of strong feelings. Congratulations to Logan. We have Jensen Bailey, who was a sixth grade student at Walnut Street Elementary. Jay, Jensen demonstrates perseverance, which is a great trait to have Jensen, so we say congratulations to you. We have Dukens Civil, who is a seventh grade student at Pinewood Middle School. Congratulations on being on the distinguished honor roll for all three quarters. Pinewood Ninth Grade Academy, we have Nadir Hopkins. Uh, Nadir is an exceptional leader for his peers. It's always great to set an example, and Nadir, we thank you for doing so. At Pinewood High School, Green Avenue Campus, we have Hama Duba, and he is during a medical emergency uh, in his seventh period, and immediately sprung into action to help a student. So as you can see, we have some great talent within our school district. And last but not least, we have from our personalized learning community, Beyonce Smith, who was a twelfth grade student. And, um, she has completed all of her coursework and will, um, graduate on time while caring for two of her two toddlers. So congratulations to you, Beyonce Smith. Let's give all those students a round of applause with words. Other items we have celebrating success this evening. Another one of our graduating seniors, Gianna Bryson-Gamble. Um, she was selected as the overall winner of this year's Rotary Club Monthly Winner, so congratulations to Gianna. I had the opportunity to spend some time with Mr. Clark, who was the twenty twenty-four District One Champion in both the long jump and triple jump. He went off to compete in the state championships. And we show what his, uh, placements were there. Congratulations to, uh, Mr. Clark. He's gonna do some great things, and he's also on the honor roll. So I'm sure he's across the street getting ready to be celebrated as well. I want to give a special thank you to Representatives Carrie and Boyd. Uh, we see the text message asking if we could have students to attend the Third Annual Kay Leroy Erbus Day of Action in Harrisburg. Some of you may not know this, but, um, Mr. Um, Erbus was the first Black Speaker of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. So we had about thirty Pinewood High School seniors who were able to go to Harrisburg. This was paid for by the representatives. And so our students got the opportunity to, um, focus on advocacy on that day and see what things are actually like in Harrisburg. So thank you to our state representatives for allowing and encouraging our students to attend. And these are just some pictures from that. Next, I do have some special things. Again, we continue to get donations from Donuts Choose. We definitely want to thank those teachers who have, um, submitted applications for support. And we wanna thank Donuts Choose for continuing to support our students and our district. Also, I just want to highlight this information, I believe, is circulating. I do not wanna miss the opportunity to let everyone in our community know, we are in the midst of our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school budget process. Most of us know that we, as a school organization, have to approve a budget by June thirtieth of each fiscal year. We are currently operating and receiving information that's indicating that the state will most likely not have an approved budget by June thirtieth. So that causes us to operate in the dark. We are literally going to be guessing at what we need to do with our budget to make sure that it is balanced and to make sure that we are able to continue to operate effectively. So this is a copy of the front and back of a flyer that we've been circulating. We will continue to circulate, and what we're asking individuals to do is make sure that they advocate to the state to get an approved budget by June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and so I wanted to highlight that information. We will be communicating with our barrels. I believe we've shared information with our parents, with friends of William Penn School District. We have attended various, um, events, and we're handing out the flyer there. We will continue to do the same, but I wanted to make sure that we shared this information again tonight as well. We did participate in our, uh, Legislative Breakfast on May the seventeenth. Um, we did have Jayla Wise, a student, speak at the Legislative Breakfast, and this Legislative Breakfast uh, encompasses all of the school districts in Delaware County. So Jayla was standing, advocating on behalf of the budget in front of elected officials, superintendents, and others, um, throughout Delaware County. So, uh, this is just a picture from that event. I wanna thank Jayla for participating. And then we also have been, uh, partnering with the Delaware County Health Department. You will see here that, uh, Morgan Askew Green, uh, who was a sophomore and a member of the Theater Club, uh, participated in a PSA, and this is actually taped in the Pinewood High School. And some more upcoming information is, will be, um, shared about that as well. And then, next, we want to remind individuals that we offer free summer enrichment. This year, we're focusing on students in grade rising, in grades K through six, meaning that they will be in one of those grades for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is a free program. Uh, I do want you all to see at the bottom, we talk about activities and resources on the right side, on the left side. We also highlight for you the multiple sites where this program is available. Um, and we also provide, uh, are providing a summer math enrichment or acceleration course as well. Right now, our numbers are indicating that we are not full at any of our programs, but we do want to encourage that families apply, uh, for this free opportunity. And lastly, I just wanna remind everyone that we are continuing our podcast updates. Uh, what do you say with Dr. Eric J? This is an effort for us to continue to communicate in various ways with our public. Uh, we were pleased to note that we did have an increase in viewership, if you will, or listenership. Um, uh, and there was an increase of about eighty percent from episode one to episode two, so we are continuing to expand. And in twenty twenty-four, we will launch season two, and in season two, we will be doing this on a monthly basis. So again, this is another way for us to communicate and reach out to our public. Uh, Madam Chair, I believe that concludes all of my comments for tonight, and I will address any questions or, um, items that the board may wish me to address regarding my update.
Thank you very much, Dr. B. Coats.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. So, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm just gonna, you know, for my updates, um, cuz he covered everything. All right. So, uh, next, we're gonna go move on to our people of agenda.
We're all the way up to.
Oh, you guys, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes, we just, we are.
All right, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Moving right along. All right. So can we have, if you have any public items, comments, sorry, public comments on agenda items?
Ms. Commodore has her hand raised.
Yes. Ms. Commodore has her hands raised. Could we give Ms. Commodore the floor?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Commodore.
Uh, this summer program, so, um, we haven't found anything that would be available for our seventh, eighth grade students going into the ninth grade? For them for the summer program?
At this time, we have not.
Are we still actively looking? Or are we just putting that on hold and parents should find something on their own?
At this time, I'm gonna suggest that parents can look at some other options. We're also looking at budgetary constraints as well. And we also looked at the, um, level of participation over the last three years. Those were some of the items that we looked at to determine how we would proceed.
Okay. I appreciate the answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other, uh, public comments on agenda items?
My question will not be on the agenda.
Okay, so wait, Ms. Michinda, if it's not one of the agenda. Okay. Go on, give her a second. Anybody online, um, comments, questions, while she's looking?
Yeah, we do not have anyone.
Okay. Okay.
I'd, I'd like to just make a comment. Um, uh, Mr. Wright sends his, uh, regrets for not being here today.
Okay, thank you.
He will be out for the next, for the foreseeable future. Recovering.
Recovering. Okay, yes, okay. Yes. All right. Thank you, um, Mr. Tom, for giving that update. While, while Ms. Michinda is still looking, um, I, I wanna say that also in the comment, usually I, I do make a a comment or announcement as Board President, and I just wanna, um, stress the fact of the, um, information with regard to our budget. Um, please, please, you know, ask some citizens to get out, to find out more information on our budget. Um, we are really working on, under some tight deadlines, and the state really has no deadline. Um, but with that being said, um, you know, we always wanna be transparent about things that, you know, could potentially get cut, so we really need to make sure that we have a full, uh, you know, full communication. So please, everyone, please stay in the loop um, with that information, um, as well. So please come out to the meetings. Yes, Ms. Michinda, you ready to go?
Yes, you don't have to. I'll take a really quick question first and then you can.
Okay. All right. So, um, state your name and where you're from.
Where I'm from?
Well, yeah, where you live at originally. You know what I'm trying to say, the residency.
Hi, I'm Ms. Michinda. I'm the president of Bell and Pinewood Middle School. I'm from Darby. Uh, F two, what is this F I D thing? Let's see.
Flexible instructional days. That is the state to put that in place to allow school districts the opportunity to, um, offer flexible instructional days in the event that there, um, are situations which would require us to do something different on a regular day of instruction. So for example, if we decide to say we're gonna do remote learning on one day because of something that's happening, this provision allows us to operate that way for the next school year. The board has to vote on it, and then we have to send that information to the state of Pennsylvania so that they'll have it in their records. That's, yes, that's what the state provides.
Mm-hmm. I have one more question. What is this AI? What is, what is that?
Where are you reading, Ms. Michinda? So we, yup, so as most of us probably are aware and know that artificial intelligence, AI, is, it's here. Uh, it's not going anywhere, and so what we want to do is make sure that we have, if you will, a framework around what our district believes, what our approach will be, how we support it. We do want to embrace AI. And so, um, we pulled together a working group of members, diverse group of members from our, um, staff, and they have been working on developing parameters around that and how we will move forward. So that's what, um, that group is about.
Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing there are no other public comments for agenda items, we're gonna move right along to our, um, communications. Um, Mr. Kaufman, do we have any communications?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Uh, next, we're gonna go to our committee reports, uh, starting with our community relations, um, agenda, uh, which is gonna be read by me, the chair. Um, A one, free summer enrichment, um, programs offered at William Penn School District. Um, the William Penn School District will offer free summer enrichment programs for William Penn School District students um, in grades K, uh, K through six for the fourth consecutive year. Um, offerings are based on student placement and school, school of attendance. Uh, they will be held from June twenty-fourth to August first, Monday through Thursday. Um, the grades listed for the programs are based upon the grade the student will enter in September twenty twenty-four. Um, A two, Pinewood High School student named Student of the Month by the Rotary Club. Okay, so, um, the Rotary Club of Upper Darby and Lansdowne recognizes high school seniors from the Pinewood High School, uh, um, Archbishop Pre- Preton.
Archbishop Prentice.
That, I was about to say, that is a typo. I'll, our Archbishop Prentice, um, and, and it's Students of the Month Program. Um, at Pinewood High School, um, Semiot, uh, for two, oh, no, Bato Kuni, Bato Kuni was selected as a Student of the Month for April twenty twenty-four. Um, students are chosen based on academic performance, leadership skills, and participation in extracurricular, uh, activities. Congratulations, uh, Semiot. Um, so, uh, A three, Pinewood High School student received scholarship from the Lansdowne Upper Darby Rotary Club. Um, Gianna Bryson-Gamble, class of twenty twenty-four, a senior at Pinewood High School, was selected at the overall winner uh, of this year's Rotary Club Monthly Winners. She was honored at a luncheon on May fifteenth, where she received fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. Eight, will receive a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. Um, A, A four, Pinewood High School student inducted into National Honor Society. Uh, there are twenty-three new members, twenty-three new members who are inducted into the Pinewood High School, uh, chapter of the National Honor Society on May second. Excuse me, joining thirty-four previous inductees. Uh, Ms. Lisa Landrum, um, Pinewood High School teacher, serves National High, um, Honors Society Chapter, um, advisor. Ms. Shayla Williams, Pinewood High School, class of twenty twenty seventeen, provided the address. Uh, the National Honor Society was officially established in nineteen twenty-one by the National Association of Secondary, uh, School Principals. For main purposes, have guided chapters of National Honor Society from the beginning to create enthusiasm for its scholarship, to stimulate a desire to render service, to promote leadership, and to develop character in the students of secondary schools. Students are selected for NHS membership based on outstanding performance in these areas. So, uh, congratulations to the new members, uh, listed below. And that concludes my community relations agenda report. Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Jen, your hands up.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Ms. Boykins. A, a big congratulations to Ms. Gianna on winning Rotary Student of the Year. That's from all the districts. Um, I've been lucky enough to spend a fair amount of time with Gianna, and she's awesome, and congratulations to her and her family on that. Exceptional recognition.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none or seeing none. We're gonna go to our education committee, uh, report read by our Chair, Ms. Valerie Cook-Hembray.
Good evening. B one, in-state field trips. And the motion is to approve in-state field trip which exceeds thirty mile limitation. And the end of the year celebration of the eighth grade students who are eligible for move-up promotion. Eighth graders will visit Hershey Park for an extended day trip from eight AM to eight PM. Also providing students with the historical significance of Hershey, PA. B two, expulsion waiver. Um, the motion is to approve. The motion is to, um, approve the students. um, approve the students who are listed in this um, for expulsion and the reasons for the listings are stated in the report. B three, additions to the agenda, there is an out-of-state field trip, and there's a motion to approve out-of-state field trips for the end of the academic year in East Lansdowne. Fifth grade class will attend a day trip to the Fun Plus in Mount Laurel, New Jersey to celebrate the end of the academic year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Val. All right, are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Oh, yes, sorry, yeah, second, okay. All in favor? Oh, wait, no, any comments, questions, concerns? Not hearing or seeing any. Did anybody see me online?
No.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, moving along. All right, next is our personnel committee agenda, read by our Chair, Ms. Wadia Ivory.
Good evening.
Good evening.
C one, retirements. We have Mr. Gary Ricard's coordinator and safety and security at the Ad- Administration Building. Mr. Ricard's has been with the district since January third, two thousand five. Effective date, July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, and I would like to just tell Mr. Ricard, thank you. Uh, you have been with us for a very long time. You have served the district well, and we wish you many years of enjoyment on your years of retirement, and again, thank you for all that you have done with the district. C two, resignations. C three, there are none. C four, changes in assignment. C five, leaves of, leaves of absence. There are no C six. C seven, miscellaneous appointments. C ten, miscellaneous personnel items. And there is a recommended action to approve the dismissal for the following employee under twenty-four P S. C eleven, modifications to previously approved items. C twelve, additions. There are no additions to the agenda. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ivory. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Um, any comments, questions, concerns uh, with regard to our personnel agenda? Uh, so from the board, hearing none, seeing none, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, uh, all those against? Okay, Ms. Michinda, did you think?
On mine, it's underneath, employee number. There's no name. Yeah.
Okay, mm-hmm, thank you. All right, um. Going to our property committee agenda, um, Mr. Tong, uh, from our chair, Mr. Tong.
Yeah, the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have D one, change order E C O one. His motion is uh, to approve change order E C O one for East Lansdowne Elementary Basement Classroom to receive all appropriate electrical and mechanical to be similar to the other classrooms. D two, change order G C O six. This motion is to approve change order G C O six for the Evans Elementary Walls to be prepared, primed, and repainted. D three, change order G C O seven. This motion is to approve change order G C O seven for East Lansdowne Elementary Basement Classroom to receive a drop ceiling and electrical fixtures similar to other classrooms. D four, it's change order M C O one. Recommended action is to uh, approve the change order M C O one for East Lansdowne Elementary Basement Classroom to receive H vac and control systems to be similar to other classrooms. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tong. Can I get a second, second? Any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, hearing, you're seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Tong. Next, we're going to go to our policy committee. Um, budget, I'm sorry, budget.
You don't want to.
I'm so sorry. I was looking right here. Next is our budget and finance committee agenda read by our Chair, Ms. Jen Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Boykins. E one, treasure report. E two, list of bills. E three, adoption of a twenty-four, twenty-five proposed final budget. Um, I'll read that uh, because it's not really of adopting the budget. Uh, recommended action is to adopt the William Penn School District twenty-four, twenty-five proposed final budget totaling a hundred and twenty-seven million plus some in accordance with Section six eighty-seven A one of the Pennsylvania School Code, not to exceed eight point zero index. Section A one of the Pennsylvania Code states that the Board of Directors shall adopt the proposed final budget no later than thirty days prior to the final adoption. The William Penn School District Board of Directors has reviewed the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed final budget totaling a hundred and twenty-seven million plus some. Um, so, uh, before we vote, that number may or may not change, uh, given what happens in the state legislature. Um, and uh, we're happy to answer any questions that the citizens may have in the next thirty days. We will also be having two budget meetings in June, um, upon my request because the legislature has not uh, told us how much money we'll be getting, so we want to plan our guests appropriately. Um, E four, and I second and third what Mr. uh, Dr. Beak and Ms. Boykin said about the budget issues, calling your legislators, having a conversation about needing a budget. Right, and, and sort of at this point, um, we would love the governor's budget, but we need a budget as important. E four, and in result of E three and not having a budget, um, if we were having a budget, E four would not even exist. Uh, E four is the tax and revenue anticipation note called a TRAN. Uh, recommended action, the Board of School Board Direct- School Directors of the William Penn School District does hereby authorize the administration to work with public finan- financial management as financial advisors, Eckert, Siemens, Sharon, and Malot as bond counsel and Sweet, Stevens, Katz, and Williams as solicitor for the purposes of issuing a tax revenue anticipation note TRAN via competitive RFP. In the event, the current Commonwealth of Pennsylvania budget impasse continues and in order to provide necessary funding for all, for the full operation of the school district during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the administration seeks authorization to proceed with the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note TRAN. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns with regard to the budget, uh, and finance agenda? All right, hearing or seeing none on all. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those against? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Uh, moving right along, next is our policy committee uh, agenda read by um, now Ju- is Julie here?
No, she's not.
She's not, okay, just want to make sure. All right. So um, Ms. Val, uh, if you don't mind, if you could read um, the policy committee agenda um, for Ms. Hopkins. If you don't mind, um, seventeen, page seventeen, yep, seventeen, twenty-one. Thank you.
F one, first reading of policy nine oh three and the recommended action, the motion is to approve the first reading of the William Penn School District Policy nine oh three public participation at board meetings and to enter such readings into the minutes. F two, and the motion reads um, for additions to the agenda flexible instruction plan day, day plan. Uh, motion to approve the William Penn School District's flexible instructional day plan for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And that uh, description was provided by our superintendent earlier in the meeting. That concludes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Val. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, are there any comments, questions, or concerns with regard to our uh, policy committee agenda? All right, hearing or seeing this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, all those against? All right, moving right along. So at this time, um, we're going to go to our solicitors' report.
Uh, just to announce that there were two executive sessions, one evening of May twenty-first, uh, one this evening preceding the business meeting, May twenty-eighth, both of which were to discuss personnel issues.
All right, thank you very much. And then we have our committee reports from our liaisons. Now, Mr. Wright is out at this time. Uh, so there is no information provided from Delaware County Community College. Uh, but next, we'll go to our Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Miss Joanna Hopkins, she's not here, who is our liaison as well. Um, so we're going to go to our next, uh, we, uh, our next uh, report, committee report from the Delaware County uh, Legislative Council is from our uh, Chair, Jen Hop, who is liaison for our Delaware County Legislative Council.
I want to thank Dr. Beak, it's Mr. Tong, and Ms. Wise for attending the event. Um, sometimes it feels like we're talking about the same things, but I think the inclusion of student voice talking about the same things was different and sort of made differently. Um, I'm really, it was, it was a nice crowd. Um, you know, our folks being in the room, they're always prepared and they are not the issue when it comes to legislative issues on our behalf. Um, but it's always good to see everyone, to meet other school board directors and to stay in conversation with folks and know that we're not out there alone. So thank you, um, June is a super busy month, we hope. Uh, we hope that the senators arrive on Ju- Monday, June third, ready to work and ready to negotiate and ready to fix this. Um, and that we're not in the guessing situation on the twenty-ninth. Um, on June twenty-ninth, but uh, be that as it may, um, thanks everyone for attending and uh, I'll be calling my legislators, so you call yours. That's it.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Uh, Mr. Kaufman, is there any old business?
There's none.
All right, new business. We do have some new business. And it's that time of year again, um, P- PSBA, um, Platform and Delegate Assembly. Um, the motion is to uh, approve me, Wadia, and Jen um, as voting members for the twenty-twenty-four P A, uh, SBA Delegate Assembly. Uh, the PESBA Delegate Assembly is a, is the um, association-wide business meeting that includes platform and bylaws, considerations, financial updates, and leadership election results. Uh, the twenty-twenty-four uh, assembly meeting will occur on Saturday, November second as a hybrid event with the meeting occurring in a PESBA uh, office in Mechanicsburg, P A. Um, the submission window for school entities submit, to submit the names uh, of their delegates is May first through August thirtieth. Um, and then we, so then, so that, yeah, I was going to say, so uh, yeah, so Wadia, yeah, the, the second and then.
He moved it.
You second, you moved it.
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
All the, all. Motion by Ms. Kertong, second, but Ms. Hall.
Okay, and any, are, are there any comments, questions, concerns, right, and then?
I'm thrilled that you guys have signed up for the platform.
Yes, so Jen, we heard your voice, you know. We heard you. Um, it'll be the first time for uh, me to have the opportunity to be a part of it. Um, so I definitely am ready for it and I'm excited about it.
Very, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm a delegate too.
Oh, okay, so we're going to.
For the solicitor portion of it.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's awesome. So thank you for that. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those against? All right, looking forward to be with you up there too, Wadia, so thank you. All right.
Captain will send things in. As there was an old note just had.
Yep. All right, so now we're going to go to item B, um. That time again, again, a point, a appointment of new trustee of Delaware County Community College. Now, uh, Mr. Wright is not here. He usually can kind of give us some feedback on some of these people, but um, the motion is to approve the appointment of George B. Dawson to the Board of Trustees of the Delaware County Community College for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine. Um, in October twenty-twenty-three, a vacancy became available on the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College. Um, according to sponsorship agreement, the responsibility of selecting the college's uh, trustees lies with the sponsoring school districts. The Liaison Committee has interviewed candidates and has recommended the appointment of George B. Dawson to fill the term which runs through June twenty-twenty-nine. Um, can I get a motion second?
Seconds?
Okay.
No, she can move that one. I didn't, I didn't want her to move the last one because she puts the first name on it.
It's done. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All right, hearing or seeing none? All right, next we'll go to our public comments for non-agenda items. So anyone who has a comment, you want to come to the podium? Uh, state your first name, last name, the area you're from, and comment. Yep, I did.
Every single time.
Yep.
We're just trying to make your. We're just trying to make your. Neither do I. No, we do.
No, we don't. This is about.
Don't entertain.
She brought this cookie, you bless your heart. Well, um.
Yes.
Okay, I was going to say, um, it wasn't a one. Just wanted to say, I want, I wanted to say it was in our last month's packet, but I didn't want to speak so quickly. Um, but yes, our last month's. No problem, no problem. I think one of the schools, um, there are different schools this year, right? Uh, well, well, if you want our website too, you will be able to see it, okay, as well. But I'll tell you, the information is there, and we are doing free lunches. Thank goodness we could do it this year, this summer. Yes. For new business. Um, under.
That might be an old agenda. Was the committee holding the duty, so we changed to, to a burning from. So that might be an old agenda.
Oh, yeah, because I was going to say that's, that, that statement is not on my, my agenda. The last statement says the submission window for school entities to submit the names of their delegates is May first through August thirty.
I think it's a holdover from when it was drafted, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they already did submissions.
All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Michinda. I'm sorry, did I miss?
No, you did not. You did, honestly.
All right, cool beans. But you know, I'm just saying thank you because I really thought we missed something. All right, so if there's not, no other.
Madam Chair, I do would like to make an announcement, if you don't mind.
No, sure, go ahead.
So um, as you are aware, the school board um, volunteered to support the efforts of um, students attending their field trips. And I wanted to give an update of the efforts um, that was made. So um, we were able to provide twenty dollars to the ninth grade academy for a trip that. for a trip that students needed to and wanted to participate in. And for Pembroke Middle School, we were able to submit four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And all of the students who were in, interested in going on that trip was able to go. And then for Walnut Elementary School, we submitted three hundred and eighty-seven dollars with a total of eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. And so I would like to publicly thank the school board, um, Dr. B Coats, um, Danielle Seward, Ms. Mathias, Bob Kaufman, and David Khan for your support in these efforts. It made a difference for our students and the, um, appreciation is in order. So thank you.
Thank you. So, Ms. Val, we wanted to also thank you though for being so diligent and, and, uh, following up on your word. Because when that came out, when the information came out, you were like, the board member is like, no, we got to make sure they go on trips. And every meeting, no matter what meeting it was, you were like, you got your donation, you got your donation. She was even going into the admin, um, the admin wings, anyone down here want to donate, you know? So we really appreciate you, your, your hard work and diligence on that because you are a board member that took it and it was like, okay, I'm going to get this to make it happen. So thank you for that.
Our students deserve the extra support and I thank the, um, school board and those who were able to contribute. So.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yeah. All right, so next we are going to go to announcements of our future meetings. Um, so we have our property committee meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, June fourth at six thirty PM, uh, which is, um, via Zoom. A policy committee meeting is Thursday, June sixth at six thirty PM via Zoom. An education committee meeting will be held six thirty, uh, Wednesday, June twelfth uh, via Zoom. And then the next day is graduation. Um, a budget advisory committee meeting, um, is actually held on the day of graduation. I think that may be changed. I don't know. Jen, you're going to keep it on the thirteen?
We can. We got work to do.
You, okay. No, people are going to be celebrating. You talk, we're back by two o'clock. Nobody goes to graduation and comes back by two. You go out to eat, you take pictures, you know? You got to take grandma back to the nursing home, whatever it may be. You know, but what I'm saying is no one's going to be dead at that time. But with that being said, in the meeting is the, is, is. Uh, rain, sleet, hail, snow, graduation. Um, it's June thirteenth. Well, sorry, Jen. Y'all okay?
We got a damn.
Oh. Mister D, you had to get up over here.
Right in the corner of the eating unit.
That's not good.
No, Jenny.
We smashed it.
It's okay. No, it was one fall and you were two. I left it alone. I just figured it was because of the. Okay. I just thought it's something, it just came in because the door was open. Oh, my God. He is hilarious. Okay, so then we're going to go on. Everyone's excited, you know, the end of the year's winding up. Uh, budget and advisory committee meeting, uh, the second one is June twentieth. So we're having two budget advisory meetings, as Jen stated, June thirteenth and June twentieth. Both are via Zoom, okay, at six thirty PM. So please, please attend. Um, the, the next committee of the whole meeting is six thirty, June seventeenth, um, at the admin building. And that meeting is hybrid, so we'll be here in, uh, via Zoom. And then you have our next business meeting, which is June twenty-fourth, um, also a hybrid meeting, um, via Zoom as well. So with that being said, uh, those are our next meetings. We look forward to seeing everybody. Uh, please get home safely and thank you very much for coming out tonight and being a part of this meeting.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourns.